Free Bridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
To order the Weaver City Council Meeting of June 28, 2010, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Juan Desang.
Here.
Joe Demott.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Present.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
And Karen Berry. And Councilmember Joyce J. is absent this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 14, 2010?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Stites, discussion on the minutes? Please poll the council. Also, please remember to turn on your mics tonight when you're talking.
Sorry, I think I activated, because half of you had pressed your buttons. Press one more time, just to make sure. There we go. Almost. Need one more vote. Mr. Reinhardt. What carries seven to zero.
Is your mic on, Mr. Stone? Next item on the agenda is Proclamations and Ceremonies. We have the Police Department, Chief Brennan.
City Council, is Joseph Barron, Heidi Barron, and Albert Kittredge-Kitt Blakely present? Why don't you come on up?
Mayor and City Council, it's with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to present to you tonight three citizens who were involved with the Police Department in the arrest of a perpetrator, and we would like to present them tonight with a citizen award. If I can read briefly the synopsis and summary of this particular incident. On March 31 of 2010, officers from the Wheat Ridge Police Department were in their neighborhood in response to a person who had violated a protection order and had eluded the officers. Officers had set up a perimeter around the area in an attempt to prevent the suspect from escaping. At one point, the suspect ran west across Fenton Street, running through backyards. Heidi Barron reported to officers that the suspect had run south from her backyard and had seen officers approaching from the south, and that he had doubled back into a ditch area in the neighborhood. This information, which Heidi provided, allowed the officers to readjust their perimeter and contain the suspect in a much smaller area. As officers started to search the area, the suspect ran once more with officers in pursuit. Officers observed the three citizens here wave their arms and scream at the suspect, blocking his path and forcing him to turn in a wide arc to avoid them. I wish they'd do that for us. Their actions effectively slowed the suspect down and assisted the officers in apprehending him. As a result of their bravery and assistance that they provided to the Police Department, the subsequent arrest of a violent suspect was possible. Their actions have shown that they have exhibited the qualities that we recognize in the Police Department for citizen involvement and action, when they could have easily had sat back and not got involved at all. Police Department and City of Wheat Ridge would like to take the opportunity to recognize them with these citizen awards and the Wheat Ridge Police Department ceremonial coins. So, Albert?
The next proclamation is American Cancer Society Relay for Life. I'd ask Mrs. Wheatridge to please read the proclamation, and ask Natalie Fedak to please accept. And Natalie, if you have a few words, feel free, after the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge, good evening. Whereas the American Cancer Society is a nationwide, community-based voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. And whereas Relay for Life is the signature activity of the American Cancer Society celebrating life, honoring cancer survivors, raising funds to fight cancer, and heightening the awareness of cancer within the Wheat Ridge community. And whereas there are an estimated 10.5 million Americans with a history of cancer alive today, and one in three Americans will be diagnosed with cancer in our lifetimes. And whereas this year alone, more than 1.4 million new cases of cancer will be diagnosed in the United States, and 19,190 cases in the state of Colorado. And whereas money raised during the American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Wheat Ridge helps support statewide research, education, advocacy, and local patient services. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Jerry DeTulio, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim July 9th and 10th, 2010, as Wheat Ridge Relay Days in the City of Wheat Ridge, and encourage citizens to participate in the Relay for Life of Wheat Ridge Lakewood at Red Rocks Community College, taking place on July 9th and 10th, 2010. I'd like to thank you for recognizing this event. I know the American Cancer Society and the Wheat Ridge Lakewood citizens really appreciate it. The more recognition we can get to the cause, the sooner we'll be able to find a cure for cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Would you please? Oh, Natalie, would you please spell your last name for the record, please? Thank you. Natalie is a senior at Weaver High School this year.
Yes, I am. F.E.D.A.K.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed their three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when 30 seconds are left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward to the podium, please state your names, spell your last name for the record, and your city or your address. Thank you.
My name is Dick Matthews, M.A.T.T.H.E.W.S., and I'm with a group that is circulating a couple of petitions to put a couple of ballot initiatives on the ballot this fall. And before the meeting, I distributed copies of my outline, a citizen alert memo that was given to me by a neighbor, some talking points that we've been giving to our people circulating the petitions, and a page from the petitions. I don't believe that that citizen alert memo was ever intended for public distribution because it misstates the proposed form of government, it misstates the operation of the proposed veto, and there are grammar, syntax, and spelling errors in it. Parts of the memo are good. Well-informed electors will make the best decisions for the future of Wheat Ridge. I am, however, troubled by the inference that members of the International City County Management Association are more ethical than the elected officials that hire them. I'm not an elected official, so I'll let the elected officials determine whether they are offended by that or not. My purpose this evening is actually to tell and prevent accurate information of what the budget, the petitions do. One petition changes the form of government to the mayor-council-administerate form of government. The department heads will continue to report to a professional administrator. Their job title will change from manager to administrator, but the administrator will continue to hire and fire all of the department heads. The professional administrator, however, will have one boss rather than nine, as in the current organizational structure. This organizational structure is not anything radical. It's actually what the city used from 1972 through 1996. And that charter was changed in '96 during a period of political turmoil, and I believe that that change was based on personalities rather than in good, long-term public policy. The petition clearly defines the chain of command, but the mayor is required to work with council. The mayor can hire the administrator, but the employment contract must be ratified by the council. The city will keep professional management, but with increased accountability, additional citizen responsiveness, and cost less because a layer of bureaucracy will be eliminated. The petition for the veto simply expands the veto to the budget. Currently, the mayor can veto ordinances, but the mayor cannot vote nor veto a budget. The petition simply would propose to expand the veto to the budget. It's intended to encourage physical discipline. That's another word for saving money. The council retains the power of the purse. Council must still approve all spending. The mayor cannot spend anything without council approval. Currently, it takes five votes to approve or amend the budget after the petition or after the ballot initiative is successful. It might require six votes on occasion if the spending is questionable and gets vetoed. Currently, we have some land use decisions in the City of Wheat Ridge that require six votes. The sale of parkland in Wheat Ridge requires eight votes. Requiring a seat majority for the spending of money is a very modest proposal and is reasonable in a difficult economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berry?
I'd like to ask Mr. Matthews a question.
Mr. Matthews, you'd like to be questioned for you from Ms. Berry?
Sure.
When I was at the grocery store, I was approached by someone with a petition. They said it was a citizens' petition, and I hadn't recognized them, and I asked them if they were a citizen of Wheat Ridge, and they said no, they were a professional petition gatherer. And I asked them who they were working for, and they said they refused to let me know. So I'm wondering if they were hired by your issue committee to gather signatures?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please spell your last name for the record, and just give us your address, I know your city.
My name is Dean Gokey. Gokey, G.O.K.E.Y. It was kind of coincidence that Mrs. Wheatridge was here talking about the proclamation for cancer. Please support all of the cancer research, and the future of many lives depend upon people participating in relays and many other fundraising events because the dollar's hard to come by these days. So let's all stand by and support the cancer patients, please. The reason I'm here tonight, and Lord, I could just have a whole list of reasons why I could come here and talk to council. I mean, I sat up there for eight years, I enjoyed some of it, it was a good time. I'm just asking here tonight for those people that are wanting a chance to vote whether or not they want a mayor-former form of council government, or a manager-form, council manager of government, to give me a call. I've got a petition, I'll bring it over, I'll let you sign it. That's the best way I know to get around to those people that haven't been touched yet, that want to participate and give the citizens of Wheat Ridge a chance to vote on what kind of government they want. Ultimately, it needs to be their decision, not council's decision, not anyone else's decision, their decision. And I think we deserve the right to let them have that decision. And that goes also for the mayor's veto. I think that my time on council, I seen a lack of check and balances that would produce a better product for the overall citizens in this community, and anytime we can add more checks or balance, I think we get a bigger bang for our buck. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record, and state your city, I know your address.
My name is Charles Holcer, H.O.L.C.E.R., live at 3175 Lamar Street in Wheat Ridge. I'm here tonight to express my disappointment in this council, and this disappointment doesn't come so much as a result of anything council has done. Frankly, not much has been done from my perspective. My disappointment came from my high expectations last November, when this new council, the new members were sworn in, and I thought, well, for now, maybe we can get something done. You know, five months ago, when Davis Reinhardt in a study session was talking about Citizen Budget Oversight Committee, and he said, you know, this is important because this is probably the most important thing this council will do this year, yet we come up to the council retreat in April, and the last item, or next-to-last item on that agenda, was cost reduction, and this council's answer to that was, well, let's study municipal compensation and hire a consultant to do it. And that's something that concerns me a great deal. We've had all sorts of consultants. We've had consultants reposition Wheat Ridge, we've had consultants that gave us the neighborhood revitalization strategy, and I'm not saying that none of those, any of those things are bad. We had a consultant give us Wheat Ridge 2020, and I asked, what has been the result of all of this? And now we're spending $2,000 per form of government to study municipal governments, two of which the city has experience with already, and as a citizen, I just don't understand that. And we're getting ready to spend $100 employees to find out what other municipalities pay for those, and my concern there is twofold. First of all, why do we have to pay to have a consultant do that, number one? Number two, why aren't we looking at the private sector? But ultimately, my disappointment comes from, I really believe that this council needs to look at revenue generation and cost reduction, and honestly, folks, either individually or here, I stand to be corrected, but I haven't seen much of either. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to step forward for public comment? Please step forward and spell your last name for the record, and spell your city or your ad, give us your address or your city.
Oh, I don't give both. Thank you. My name is Bob Wilson, W.I.L.S.O.N. I live at 11480 West 66th Place in your neighboring city of Arvada. I'm here to say I want to work with the people, serve the people, as your RTD director in the northwest corner of Wheat Ridge. Something called District, RTD calls District L, is north of 38th, west of Kipling, including Councilor Demott's area, and my friend, Treasurer Larry Schultz's home there. And why am I running? Why do I want to take on this joy? Well, I'm very passionate about public transit. I want to see all the fast tracks built. For Wheat Ridge, that's the gold line that goes through some of your community and ends in Wheat Ridge at Ward Road. The west corridor, the west end, is in District L, the improved bus service. Also, I want to help the one-third of the people in the Denver area who do not drive. They choose not to, they're too young, maybe a little old, I don't like to drive at night, maybe they can't afford a car. And also, I've worked as a power system, energy system engineer for about 30 years now, and one of my key planks is promoting sustainability. Solar on the commuter rail maintenance facility to be built, perhaps solar on the transit panels. But again, would like to work for you, like to listen, like to answer your questions. And again, Bob Wilson, RTD, District L, and thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions? One of the...
Thanks, Bob.
...jobs. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for public comment, before we move on? Seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? The agenda will stand as published. Item one is the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent Agenda, item 1A, Resolution 32-2010, amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $82,963.54, consisting of the 2010 Colorado Auto Theft Prevention Authority grant of $75,463.54, and the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program grant for police overtime in the amount of $7,500. And 1B, Resolution 31-2010, amending Resolution 25-2010, amending the public hearing date for case number ANX-10-02 pertaining to annexation of remnant parcels of right-of-way located in the east half of Section 16, Township 3 South, Range 69 West of the 6th Provincial Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Is a motion in order?
Before we go on, do we have anybody here who wanted to talk or ask any questions on item 1B, which is the change of the public hearing for item 1B? Seeing none, motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A and 1B.
Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve items 1A and 1B, seconded by Councilmember Adams, discussion on the consent agenda. Please poll the council.
Motion carries... Sorry. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff and applicant, and then the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments remain to the issue. Item two is Council Bill 08-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 08-2010, an ordinance amending Article 7 of Chapter 26 concerning off-premise identification signs, community event sponsorship banners, and signs in the public right-of-way. Case number COA 1001.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 08-2010 will be assigned, ordinance number 1463.
My name is Sarah Scholwalter. I'm a planner 2 in the Community Development Department. I'm here to do the presentation tonight for case COA 1001 pertaining to amendments to the Sign Code. Start giving just a quick background. The Sign Code was last amended in 2005, and since that time, in the recent years, we've had a couple issues arise, three, and we are proposing that three amendments are packaged into one through this ordinance. The first relates to off-premise identification signs for large unified developments. The second to temporary community event banners on public property. And the third for the ability to put freestanding signs in adjacent right-of-way for commercial properties in limited circumstances. So I'm going to walk through a little background on all three of the items. The first item relating to off-premise identification signs. The current Sign Code does not allow off-premise signs, which are signs that draw attention to a business or an activity that's not on the subject property. We do have a few exceptions. We allow for public and semi-public signs to be off-site. Usually, those are traffic signs or provide information about a community destination. We also have an exception for billboards, which are only allowed in certain parts of the city with a maximum of 16. We do have some cases for large, typically it's large commercial developments that will provide infrastructure improvements that are actually beyond the boundaries of the land that they control as part of their overall development. And currently, the Sign Code would not allow them to put signs on or next to those infrastructure Originally, staff had recommended to amend the Sign Code to create some new categories for off-premise identification signs that would pertain to primarily large commercial or mixed-use developments. And we did not really want to see this option for off-premise identification signs open up to a wide range of commercial development, but be specific to pretty large unified developments that are already doing a comprehensive approach to signage. Based on that, we had a public hearing in front of Planning Commission on June 3 for these three amendments, and Planning Commission actually voted against the original proposal and recommended instead that the types of developments we're trying to serve could actually meet their off-premise signage needs through a master sign plan, which is a process that we already have built into the Sign Code. And I will speak a little bit more about that process in a minute. The next topic that's included tonight are community event sponsorship banners. This originally arose based on our Parks Department, who would like to be able to place temporary banners on bough fields at city parks to advertise special events as well as sports leagues going on. Currently, our code actually has a category for temporary banners, but it's designated more for commercial properties. You have to mount the banner on a building, it cannot be mounted on a fence, and the allowable size of the banner relates to the size of a building. So for a lot of parks' properties, there is no building, or there's only a very small one, so it doesn't meet their needs. And based on a study session with city council, staff also looked into the option, and it's included in the ordinance, to allow for these temporary community event sponsorship banners on school properties as well. There already are several schools that use this form of banner on athletic fields, primarily for sponsorship opportunities. So the idea is to allow, amend the Sign Code to allow that practice, and Planning Commission wanted to make sure that staff had what we have, and the ordinance reflects what the school district's needs are. So we were able to speak with staff at the Jefferson County School District and find out what their existing policies are on these banners. They have a maximum of four by eight feet, or 32 square feet per sign, and they don't have any maximum on how long the signs are up, or how many banners are at one school. And the third topic that's part of the ordinance tonight are signs in the right-of-way. Currently, the code does not allow construction of commercial signs in the public right-of-way, and generally, we support the intent of that. However, we do have some commercial sites in the city that are redeveloping, and based on unique right-of-way conditions, have a very difficult time providing a sign on their site that's also visible from the street. And this graphic is an example of that. This is on Harland Street, and the, it's close to 44th, and you can see wherever there's a yellow dot, that's an existing sign, and the red line is the right-of-way line. So there actually already are several signs in this area that are either partially in the right-of-way or entirely in the right-of-way, most likely because at the time the sign was built, it was, we didn't know that that's where the right-of-way line is, because it doesn't look like it actually is part of the street. So we have circumstances where somebody might come in and want to reuse one of these properties as an improved commercial business, but they aren't able to put a sign out where it's visible where all the other signs are because it's technically in the right-of-way. There are several jurisdictions in the metro area that have an option for allowing signs to be built in the right-of-way. Typically, it's subject to a revocable permit, that basically the person building the sign signs this permit and agrees that the city could come in at any time and require the sign to be removed. We already have a very similar permit for other items in the right-of-way that Public Works administers, and it has a term of five years, so you have to apply to have it renewed every five years. So be able to use the same permit and just include signs as another item that could be constructed. So we'd be able to use the same permit and just include signs as another item that could be constructed in the right-of-way. And now I'll walk through our staff recommendations relating to the three different topics. The first is the off-premise identification signs. We are recommending to take the direction recommended by Planning Commission, which is rather than creating new categories in the code for specific off-premise signs, allow the option to go through a master sign plan process to meet needs for an off-premise sign or more than one sign. Currently, the master sign plan process applies to commercial and industrial sites that are two acres or larger. The language says that the master sign plan is intended to encourage well-designed signs that are, create a uniform district. There already is language that a master sign plan can allow for flexibility in the allowable area of signage, as well as the location of signage. And based on input from the city attorney, we can make a small change to that language to be very specific that a master sign plan can approve off-premise signs. And we'll be able to use this process as a way to, on a case-by-case basis, address needs for off-premise signs. And the master sign plan is reviewed by staff and approved by the Planning Commission. The staff recommendation relating to community event sponsorship banners is to create a new category of a temporary banner that would only be allowed on city-owned property or public school property. We are recommending that it's not just on parks' property, but other city-owned properties as well, in case we want to take advantage of the opportunity to put a community event banner out, although we are imagining it would be primarily utilized on parks' property. The Parks Department is working on developing their own process for issuing special event permits and having administrative guidelines about approving banners, which could include the opportunity for sponsorship on these temporary banners. And they would regulate where the sign, these banners could be placed, and how long they could be up. We are recommend, originally, staff had included maximum duration for how long the banners could be up, but it's actually not something we really want to be enforcing, or let parks administer that on their own. So we are recommending that we do not include a maximum duration in the code, and instead allow parks to regulate that. Then there's a second category, it's still a form of a community event sponsorship banner, but we are separating out the ones that would be on school property, because those will be, not be permitted or regulated at all through parks, but instead through the schools themselves. And we are recommending to make the ordinance match what we've discovered from the school district are their existing policies, which, to restate, is a maximum size of thirty-two square feet, and no maximum number of signs per site, or maximum time for how long the banners can be up. And the final recommendation tonight is to create an exception to the rule of not allowing signs to be constructed in the right-of-way for certain properties that would meet various specific criteria, which are listed here, I won't read through them all, but the basic idea is that it needs to be commercial properties, there need to be really no other viable alternatives on the site. It cannot be on streets that are already on a short-term plan for widening. There can't be any conflicts with utilities. So we will be putting the perm out on referral to utilities to make sure we don't have overlap issues, that the sign can't be a pole sign, and that the content needs to be restricted to advertising for the business or operation that's associated with the sign. And a quick overview, we think all of the proposed amendments tonight fit in with goals that are identified in our comprehensive plan of Vision Wheat Ridge, both to promote redevelopment along our commercial corridors and provide better service to the community, especially in terms of the community event banners. And I will also just quickly summarize, in conclusion, three motions or changes that we're proposing from the original ordinance in your packet, so that everything reflects the recommendations I just went through. One is to, instead of having all of these new categories for off-premise identification signs, to remove that concept and amend the language on master sign plans to make it clear that they can approve signs located off property. The second is to revise the regulations about community event sponsorship banners to match the information received from the schools on how they already administer their banners, to remove a restriction on maximum duration for those that are on city-owned property. And finally, this was a technical issue that came up from one of our planning commissioners. We needed to add a definition of pole sign to the code, and the original language said that the pole would be constructed of wood or metal. And the commissioner made the point that it is possible somebody could have a pole sign that where the pole would be made out of a different material, we don't want to create a loophole. So we want to remove any material restrictions from that definition. Especially as technology advances, there could be lots of different options for what the pole might be made out of. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to a public comment, we'll come back possibly. For public comment, do we have anybody here to speak under item number two? Please step forward, spell your last name for the record, and please state your address and/or your city.
My name is Carrie Foreman, it's F like Frank, O-R-E-M-A-N. My address is forty-
Please step in the mic.
Oh, Foreman, F-O-R-E-M-A-N. My address is four-two-four-three Harland Street. It's my business address. Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes to speak this evening, sorry, I'm a little dried out. I am the owner of Lakeside Animal Hospital, a new full-service small animal hospital, located at forty-two-four-three Harland Street. My little building was initially a home, it was in a dental office. Its last incarnation was as a counseling facility, and then we purchased the building shortly before Thanksgiving last year, and then proceeded to remodel it to within an inch of its life, and mine too, I think. It is fabulous, it is forty-five-hundred square feet of fabulous, and I would encourage any of you who are in the area and stop by to come in and see it. I would love to give you a tour, I really am very proud of it. What I'm asking for this evening is permission to construct a sign in the right-of-way. I, my practice needs sign visibility for both north and south traveling traffic on Harland Street. I have met a great many people from the neighborhood. I'm very pleased with my decision to have my business in Wheat Ridge. I've met people that have seen the clinic as a work in progress, they have stopped in, they have introduced themselves, seen the facility, and have subsequently become clients. But what I have also found is that the adage that without a business sign, there's no sign of business, seems to be somewhat true. I have talked to clients who are actually lost on Harland Street, excuse me, unable to find my building. And I think the reality is, no matter how fabulous your facility, people are looking for a sign, not a building. I am wanting this sign to be visible, both for an increase in my business, and also, I think, bottom line, it will increase the tax revenue for Wheat Ridge. As a low-cost veterinary practice, I plan on being very busy, and the increased sign, I think, is going to help, like I say, both my business and Wheat Ridge. So I appreciate you taking this matter into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for item 2? We'll move on to council questions, discussion. Ms. Berry?
First, your, your new building is really a wonderful addition to the city. It is really beautiful. And, you know, I do support these amendments, and there have been a lot of folks in the community, whether it be a sports op, you know, a children's sports operation that needs to get more kids involved, or a business like you. I think these amendments are really needed, and I'm happy that the staff put in all the work in the Planning Commission to kind of finally move this thing forward. I think last year, when we talked about billboards, till, we were all tired of it. I didn't think I would ever mention it again. But I have a couple questions on billboards. The current definition of a billboard in the code is basically just a sign that's, you know, fifty square feet or larger. This adds in a pole, as a billboard would then be a pole and something fifty feet, fifty square feet or larger. My recollection is we had one billboard in the city that was kind of on a wooden structure, and not necessarily a pedestal or a freestanding pole. Is that correct? I don't know, Meredith, you?
I was not sure of which billboard you were speaking, but that sounds right to me. And staff would have no problem. If you feel like pole needs to be struck from that definition, then that would not create a loophole for someone who didn't exactly meet that exact definition?
Yeah, I think the requirements in the billboard say, "All new billboard shall be a pedestal type." So I think the code, rather than the definition, says it should be kind of a pole. So, yeah, I was just wondering if it would make that, we would now make that sign, not a billboard, so.
That's a valid point. Again, we didn't have a chance to field check it, so I can't answer for sure, but.
Okay, so we could just maybe, maybe that addition to the billboard section isn't necessary? We can keep it as-is? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, I just had a question on how, and within our sign coding, how it applies. Is it, there's twelve criteria for acceptance of a sign in a public right-of-way. Is it, within our code, is it totally staff discretion as to whether those twelve criteria have been met? Is that a totally staff item?
Yes, it is.
And is there, is there any, within our process, is there, is there an appeal to that? Then does it become a request for variance? Or what happens if staff rejects one of these criteria?
Right now, the way it's written, there is no appeals process. I'm not sure, I don't know if our city attorney would know, would there be an option to go for a variance?
Well, it's written, it's, as written, it's a decision of the Pope Works Director and Community Development Director jointly have to approve. It's not a use variance. So unless there was something else specific in the ordinance, and I believe there is, the Board of Adjustment would probably have jurisdiction, because it's a decision of an administrative official.
So you could appeal to the Board of Adjustment?
I believe so. I don't see a, it's, I'm trying to tick off the things the Board of Adjustment doesn't have jurisdiction over, density, you know, use restrictions, some aspects of height. But I don't think it would extend to denial of a, of a permit. So in other words, I think that would be within their jurisdiction, I have to look, but I'm, I think they would.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions, Mr. Stites?
On the off-premise signage, will that have an effect on the industrial parks?
In terms of-
More signage?
It could, obviously, they would have to go through the master sign plan process, which would consist of coming up with a unified sign plan design, and it would have to be approved by both staff and the Planning Commission. And one of the things that we had originally looked at relating to this topic is that there should be some kind of nexus between where the sign can go and relationship to the development. So if you make infrastructure improvements, then there's a logical reason somewhere near there to be able to put the sign. And I think we would want to look at similar criteria for an industrial park as well.
Yeah, I wish you would look into that, because it's kind of bad sometimes in those industrial parks where you have twelve, maybe eighteen different businesses in there, and they get a little teeny-tiny section on that. And I think it hurts that, and they should be allowed to put more signage out there on a separate level or whatever. And I'd like to see that. But on the row signs, I've always preached flexibility. And I think that passes tonight, we have the flexibility there. If we want to revitalize some of these older areas, some of these older buildings, well, we're going to have to show some flexibility in this, and I think that's an excellent way to go on the, on the row signage.
Okay, any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Ms. Berry?
I'm sorry, I had one more question I forgot to ask. On the company sponsorship on banners for the parks, you know, I kind of, I understand being able to pay for the signs by doing sponsorship or generate some revenue. But I'm wondering if we don't adopt guidelines, would anybody be able to come and say, "I want to have a sponsorship"? Would we be able to deny any business or any message if we didn't have any regulations in place? For who could get a sponsorship of a, of a Parks banner?
My understanding is that the Parks Department is trying, is developing their own criteria related to sponsorship and who it's appropriate for. And that'll be part of how they administer. But we tried to keep that out of the actual sign code and leave it to their administrative policy.
So we'd probably adopt then an administrative policy on that.
Or the Parks Department would, just as a department. They have other policies that don't rise to council-level approval, but they do adhere to uniformly, and that those guide them. So I would expect we'd probably use the same mechanism at their level.
Yeah, you know, I know we've, like at the Capitol, we've had big discussion on whether we're going to have, like, the Pepsi Dome during construction. I would hate to see, you know, banners in perpetuity, and, you know, hanging from the rec center or any other building without, you know, some sort of policy direction from the council on that, so, but.
We'd certainly convey that to the, to the Parks and Recreation Department. As they're developing those, those guidelines, they'll probably would want to bring them forward, maybe in a study session context, to get a head nod from the council that they're on the right track.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing, and emotions in order?
I move to approve Council Bill number 08-2010, case number ZOA 1001, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws concerning off-premise identification signs, community event sponsorship banners, and signs in the public right-of-way on second reading, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication. I further move to direct staff to make necessary amendments to the ordinance to remove all references to off-premise signs, and instead amend Section 26-708 dot E dot 2 regarding master sign plans to include the language "including off the subject property." I further move to direct staff to amend the ordinance to modify the definition of a pole sign to read "a sign which is affixed to or mounted on a freestanding pole and anchored in the ground." I further move to direct staff to make necessary amendments to the ordinance so that the regulations pertaining to community event sponsorship banners on school property match the Jefferson County School District policies for sponsorship banners, and to amend the ordinance to remove restrictions on duration for community event sponsorship banners on city-owned properties.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang, discussion on the main motion.
I would like to make an amendment.
Okay.
Strike the word "pole" from the definition of billboard.
Is there a second on the amendment to strike the word "pole" from the definition?
Second.
Discussion from Meredith, is that making sense? Okay, we have a motion to strike the word "pole," seconded by Councilmember Demott. Please poll the, oh, Mr. Stites?
Just for clarification, what will that do?
Well, it still keeps a billboard as a pedestal type, a pedestal-type sign. Excuse me, I was out in the sun all day. But what it will do is, it will still keep the one billboard that we have that isn't a pedestal, as defined as a billboard. If you don't define it as a billboard, that may allow an additional billboard to be built.
Well, then I'm happy.
Okay, please poll the council on the amendment.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Please poll the council on the main motion as amended.
Motion carries-
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Council Bill 09-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing, Councilmember Demott.
Can I ask one question, Michael? Is there a volume on here? I'm just, I know we have, this is another public hearing, and I can't hear from that microphone. I don't know if anybody else is hearing, not hearing?
I don't have control over that. Unfortunately, it's in the little, little room behind me.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a, we have a point of order. We could ask the sound person to please check the sound of the mics, please. I can't really hear either, that's why I was wondering. I couldn't hear Mr. Snow, so...
I think it's the air conditioner. I think the overworked air conditioner is drowning out folks.
I'm struggling a little too, but it depends on who it is. Can I come back in half a minute? Well, I can't hear Joyce tonight. I'm struggling with Joyce, I'm just not picking it up at all.
Which, I bet I can be loud enough.
Well, let's go ahead and continue on for now. Go ahead and, with the city clerk, oh, Mr. Demott, please, go ahead and introduce the item.
Sorry for the delay, thank you. Council Bill Number 09-2010, An Ordinance Amending a Planned Industrial Development Outline Development Plan for Construction of a Public Fire Station on Property Located at 5250 Oak Street, Case Number YZ1003, Skyline Estates, Number Three.
Will the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, we will. Council Bill 09-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1464.
Thank you. I'd like to swear everybody in, please stand, if you're going to speak on this agenda item, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, Case Number WZ1003, Skyline Estates, Number Three. This is an approval of an amendment to a PID outlined development plan at 5250 Oak Street. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, case file, and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the City of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. We are looking at the property outlined in red. It is bounded on three sides by public right-of-way. On the south side, we've got Ridge Road. On the west, we've got Oak Street, and to the north is West 53rd Avenue. It's comprised of about 2.01 acres, and you can see that most of the adjacent land use, particularly to the north, is a single-family residential. To the west, and I do not have the city limit line on here, but this particular side of the property is zoned and under development into, it looks like maybe eight plexes, so some higher-density residential. In order for the applicant to proceed to the final development plan stage and building permit, an amendment is required to the approved ODP plan, which council did review in March. That was a conceptual plan, and of course, they had to come back and modify that plan, so it meets the requirements of a specific plan, and that's what we are considering, or you are considering tonight. This is a little bit better. This shows the existing city limit line, just to help orient you, Ridge Road down here at the south, this is Oak, and this is 53rd. All the area that is colored in the photograph designates the City of Wheat Ridge, so you can see that it's somewhat of an enclave with City of Arvada over here to the west in the white, and then also to the north and to the east. There's a variety of land uses that surround the property. Again, a single-family residential development to the north. On the south side of Ridge Road, the purply color designates planned industrial development. This parcel was originally zoned from A1 to PRD and PID in 2003. The total area of the site included all of this, the residential portion and the industrial portion, it was about 17 and a half acres. It was subsequently subdivided, and you can see the existing lot configuration into 37 residential lots, and then one industrial piece, which is the one we're speaking about tonight. The current uses allowed on the property include manufacturing, some office warehouse, large-format retail, and of course, as amended in March, a public fire station. This is a piece of the plat, the portion that has the subject property. Again, to help orient you, north is at the top, we've got Ridge Road along the south, Oak Street over here in the City of Arvada, to the north is 53rd Avenue, and the parcel we're looking at tonight is this piece in here. The, the development, again, was platted into 37 residential lots, and the one planned industrial lot has the residential portion totally built out. And with that development of the residential component, all of the infrastructure was installed, so all of the curb gutter and sidewalk is in place around the property. Included within those improvements included drainage and open space tracks, and if you look carefully at this, this exhibit, you can see that there's a drainage, conveyance, easement at this location, and also a portion of the Columbine Basin, which is what I would call an area, area drainage plan, that happened to fall within the development. So those are a couple of the site constraints that they had as they were working through this. This was a piece of the plan that was approved in March. Again, they came back through and added a public fire station as an additional use to the property. It also included a conceptual site plan, which was the second sheet of the packet, and again, shows kind of the tentative layout of the property, including the approximate building location and so on. Some slides of the property. This is standing on Oak Street, which is on the western side, western perimeter of the property, looking to the north. The structures in the back are part of the Skyline Estates, I believe Number Three, which is some, a portion of the low-density residential, single-family development. This is looking west, along Ridge Road. Again, you can see that there are public improvements in place along Ridge as well as Oak Street. Looking northeast from Oak, again, you can see the Skyline Estates Three, which is in the Wheat Ridge city limits. Looking to the east, southeast, in the background, you can see some of that existing industrial development on the south side of Ridge. Looking east along 53rd. Looking south on Nelson, again, you can see back in the background Rocky Mountain Bottle right over here. And then this is looking east along Ridge Road. This conveyance channel in this, right here in the picture, is that piece of the Columbine Basin that was installed as part of the infrastructure improvements for the original Skyline Estates. So included in your packet is a plan set, which is the specific ODP plan for the property. There are four sheets to that set. This is the first one, which is the declaration page, and as, as per typical, includes the signature blocks and the legal description, all the declarations that are required to be on. This is sort of the heart and soul of the development plan. It is the site plan. Technically, it's a refinement, the layout's pretty close to what they were showing during their concept plan, but it's a little bit more specific, showing landscaped areas, and they've made some adjustments because of the compensating for the drainage in the area. Again, allowable uses on the development plan, which is the list over on the left-hand side, includes vet clinics, general retail, furniture grocery stores, light industrial development, and then of course, the fire station, which was added on in March. Let's see, the structure is a little bit, little bit further south than they were showing on the sketch plan. They still are having their circulation come in from Oak Street, and the idea would be that fire trucks enter at this location and then circle around through the overhead doors on the east and west sides. Employee parking to the north, visitor parking to the south. Both of those driveways do cross that detention area, so there will have to be accommodations made for that as their final plan, final design. Again, all of the rights of way that are surrounding the property have improvements already installed, including curb gutter and sidewalk. As part of the application package, we did require that a preliminary traffic study be submitted. It was submitted and reviewed by Public Works, and at this time, they are saying that there is not a need for any sort of signalized access to Ridge Road. They also did review a preliminary drainage report, and would appear that they meet all the requirements there. This is a table which is intended to depict the different development standards that we typically look at on this sort of application. Over on the left-hand side is the particular development standard. As you read down, you'll see, I talk about side setbacks and landscaping, parking, and so on. Conceptual ODP was what was provided on the March 2000, excuse me, March 2010 plan, and then where they're stacking up with the specific standards. So for example, the minimum front setback from the west side per the concept plan was 50 feet, and what they're showing with their actual design is right at about 69. Again, they do meet or exceed all of the requirements. They are showing a minimum of 20% landscaping on site, and if you look down the chart, you can see that they far exceed that with 66%. The one, this is the third sheet of the development plan, obviously the building elevations, and the one, the one area that they were somewhat lacking were the standards in the Architectural and Site Design Manual. They meet most of the requirements. The one piece that they don't meet is the transparency requirement. And if you're familiar with the Architectural and Site Design Manual, we recall, we call for transparency of ground floor facades that are facing streets to be 60%, not more than 85%, and not less than 30%. I did have them include an analysis of where they were with transparency, and they are somewhat lacking, showing 14% on the north-facing elevation, 20% on the south-facing elevation, about 19 and a half percent on the facade adjacent to Oak Street, which is the west. And quite honestly, you know, that is a fairly new document, and as we've been working our way through it, we are starting to realize it was really, at least this provision was really written for some sort of retail situation where you would have a big, a big window with your wares on display, and does not really translate well in this kind of context. It wouldn't work for industrial either. So that's a piece of the code we're probably going to be taking a look at. We are supporting what they're showing on the, on the development plan because it is a planned development. We do have flexibility in applying those standards, and they so far exceed some of the other standards in the ASDM that we refine with the design. This last sheet of the development plan is their perspective drawing. As you can see, it looks very residential in nature, a good mix of materials and roof lines, and we think it will blend well with the neighborhood. All of the agencies responding to our referrals can serve the property. There will be some upgrades required, water lines, hydrants, and so on. Quest and XL Energy can serve the property. Public Works has reviewed and approved a preliminary drainage report and a traffic analysis. They have requested suggested language be added regarding emergency signal installation. That was one of the conditions of Planning Commission review, and it was added into the, I believe, the front sheet of the plan. There was a neighborhood meeting held on March 21st of 2010, and we did not have any neighbors or other property owners in attendance. Staff has concluded that there are changed conditions due to the residential development on three sides and the future construction of the Gold Line Transit Line and Stop, that there are several goals of the comprehensive plan that have been met by the application, that the proposed use is less impactful than what is currently allowed under the PID, that the proposed use would serve as a transition and buffer from Ridge Road into the neighborhood, all public infrastructure is in place, that there will be a positive impact on health, safety, and welfare due to better fire protection, and that the design is generally consistent with the specs in the ASDM. Planning Commission heard this request on May 20th. They did recommend approval with three conditions of approval, and all three of those have been modified on the plan set that you're reviewing tonight. Staff is giving a recommendation of approval, no conditions, and I would be happy to answer questions at this point if you have some.
Thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Does the applicant have anything to present? Please spell your last name for the record and your address, if you want to add anything to the staff report.
My name's John Greer, G-R-E-E-R, Fire Chief with Arvada Fire Protection District, 7903 Allison Way, Arvada. Just wanted to say I really appreciate your consideration of this fire station. I think it will allow Arvada Fire to better serve the southwest part of our district and the northwest part of your city. The fire station, as you see, will fit in very well with the neighborhood. We've had nothing but good responses out of the other two neighborhoods where we built stations very similar to this, and I just want to assure all the neighbors that noise is not a problem. That seems to be our biggest concern. We have a station at 80th and Alchire, and the neighbors comment to me that they don't even know it's there, which is about the best neighbor they can have. I think they wish some of their other neighbors were that quiet. So with that, I just want to say thanks again, and we look forward to building this. We're going out to bid if this is approved later this month, and starting construction hopefully by the end of summer. And next summer, we should be inviting you down to a grand opening of a fire station. So thanks.
Thanks. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here for item number three tonight from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions, discussion. Ms. Berry?
First of all, I think the drawings are great, and I look forward to going to the grand opening. Meredith, I have a question about the landscape plan. On the, the site plan, it says turf or native grass.
Mm-hmm.
Is native grass considered landscaping?
It is. It does have to be irrigated, but yes, it's considered landscaping.
The, the plans also show some circles which look like tree canopy, but the crosshatching says native grass or turf. Those trees would be great, I think, were there placed, it would really kind of soften the effect of that pavement, you know, kind of stop the heat island. I'm wondering if the crosshatching is just incorrect, or were those, are they planning to put trees surrounding the drive?
Yeah, they actually, because they've got three street frontages, they've got some fairly substantial landscaping that's going in. Our requirement is one street tree for every 30 feet of street frontage, not placed on center, so it would be my thought that that was probably the ground cover that's underneath versus sod or rock.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think the, the landscape plan with the trees and stuff, it's going to be great, and it's going to look really nice. All right, thank you.
Any other questions before I close the public hearing, Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that if this passes, we would welcome the Arvada Fire Department into Wheat Ridge. And I've said before, I think, I think it's great anytime somebody from Arvada builds on Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and a motions in order?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 09-2010, Case Number WZ1003, Request for Approval of an Amendment to a Planned Industrial Development Outline Development Plan to Allow Construction of a Public Fire Station on Property Located at 5250 Oak Street on Second Reading, and that it take effect 15 days after publication for the following reasons. The proposed ODP amendment for a specified plan is consistent with the standards established on the underlying plan. The proposed use will provide a buffer and land use transition from the industrial uses on the south side of Ridge Road to the residential neighborhood to the north. The evaluation criteria support approval of the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval? There's more to it, Mr. Demott, with the following conditions?
I don't have that.
Hey, Jay?
Oh, mine is different.
Well?
With the following conditions.
Do we have a... Do we have a following, the following conditions on this? Mr. Reinhardt's saying we do. Is there more to the motion?
I do not have any in my packet.
I'm not understanding correctly. The conditions were done at Planning Commission. They've all been incorporated, so there should not be conditions. Of course, I don't have my staff report in front of me.
Oh, page four is the motion. Mr. Demott, is that what you're on, page four?
That's what I have.
Okay. So we have a motion for approval, seconded by, who was it, seconded by? Oh, Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. So item four is Council Bill 10-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Council Bill 10-2010 is an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to Permit the Waivers of Use Taxes.
Thank you. With the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 10-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1465.
Do you have a staff report, Mr. Ruff or Mr. Dell?
Counsel, the amendment conforms the use tax section of the code with another provision of the code that allows the counsel acting on a specific request to enter into an agreement for waiver of taxes. And we wanted to, use taxes, and we wanted to make certain that the general provision on entering into that agreement was consistent with the, the use tax section of the code permitting it to be waived. And so this really conforms those two sections of the code to work together.
Thank you.
Yep.
No staff, there's no applicant. So any council discussion before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order?
I move to approve Council Bill 10-2010 on Second Reading, ordered published and that it will take effect 15 days after publication.
Is there a second? You have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Adams? Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item five is Council Bill 11-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing and Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 11-2010, An Ordinance Extending the Moratorium Enacted by Section Two of the, of Ordinance 1453 Series 2009 on the Submission, Acceptance, Processing and Approval of Any Application for the City of Wheat Ridge Permit or License Related to the Operation of a Business or Cooperative That Sells or Cultivates Medical Marijuana. On September the 4th, 2009, Council Adopted Ordinance 1453 Series 2009, which enacted a temporary moratorium on the issuance or consideration of any city license or permit concerning medical marijuana dispensaries. On March 8th, 2010, Council Adopted Ordinance 459, which extended the moratorium until July the 13th, 2010. One purpose for extending the moratorium was to allow the state to adopt a law concerning the regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation operations. The General Assembly enacted House Bill 10-1284, which regulates the sale, distribution, cultivation, growth and manufacture of medical marijuana throughout the state. The House Bill 10-1284, through House Bill 10-1284, the General Assembly enacted the Colorado Medical Marijuana Code into Article 43.3 of Title 12, CRS, the code. The code is a new state and local licensing model for the sale, distribution, cultivation, growth and manufacture of medical marijuana and medical marijuana infused products. The Colorado Department of Revenue, DOR, is named as the state's licensing authority. To implement provisions of the code, the DOR is authorized to adopt emergency rules. The DOR must hold a hearing on these rules by September the 1st, 2010. Any rules to implement the code will likely impact any licensing model adopted by the city. The code authorizes the city to extend its existing temporary moratorium until the effective date of the rules adopted by DOR. The attached ordinance will extend the moratorium until that date. This date will provide sufficient time for the state to finalize its regulatory model and allow council to consider appropriate regulations for implementation of the city that are, that are consistent with state law.
Would the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 11-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1466.
Thank you. Was there any more information from staff based on the executive summary?
No, I think the summary was, was more than complete. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward if you have to, like to speak on item number five. Spell your last name for the record and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Durkin, D-U-R-K-I-N. My address is 11554 West Progress Place in Littleton, Colorado. As a Deputy District Attorney in Jefferson County, currently assigned as the liaison to the West Metro Drug Task Force, we encourage you to extend the moratorium and ultimately exercise what 1284 provides for as a, as a ban or called a local option to ban dispensaries or how, how they've been now deemed to be medical marijuana centers. The reason for that, that encouraging or the recommendation is that since the Colorado voters in their very good-natured will passed Amendment 20 in November of 2000, what we have seen is that this amendment has been, has been extremely abused. In May 31st, 2009, the registry numbers were a total of 7,630 valid registry cards were in effect in May, just May of last year. In five months, that number blossomed, just absolutely exploded to 21,625 valid patient registry cards. The numbers within those numbers are disturbing. 19,000 of those 21,000, 19,643 of those patients identify pain as their debilitating medical conditions. That's followed up by roughly 6,600 persons who put down spasms as their debilitating medical conditions and, and a little over 4,000 who, who list nausea as their debilitating medical condition. Amendment 20 focused primarily on those who, who truly and tragically suffer from a debilitating medical condition like cancer, AIDS, or glaucoma or seizures. And the stats from October 31st, 2009 is of the 21,625 registry card holders, only 571 suffered from cancer, 529 from seizures, 482 from wasting disease, 228 from glaucoma and a, and a very small 213 who listed HIV and AIDS as their debilitating medical condition. While pain accounted for 91% of all registry card holders, those debilitating medical conditions that I just listed, cancer, seizures, wasting disease, glaucoma and HIV, only accounted for nine total between all of them. Currently, there are 24,500 registry card holders and there is 58,000 pending. Now, there is an explosion in regards to this medical marijuana in just the last year. The, the landscape has changed significantly due to the fact that the United States Department of Justice redid their priorities just last year and they published their deference to the state and local law enforcement who have medical marijuana laws in their states. However, in doing so, they deemed that, they, in their same memo, said that Congress has determined marijuana is a dangerous drug and the illegal distribution and sale of marijuana is a serious crime and provides a significant source of revenue to large-scale criminal enterprises, gangs and cartels, in cartels. Marijuana distribution in the United States remains the single largest source of revenue for the Mexican cartels. And I can assure this council that we have seen that, I personally have seen that just two weeks ago. At the same time that our legislature was considering House Bill 1284, Obama, the Obama Administration's drug czar was giving a speech in Los Angeles, or I should say, in California. And as he was speaking to, to a group in California, he was lamenting the problems that we're having here in Colorado. And he was discussing with the, the meeting that he was at, how in the Netherlands, they are seeking to close down their marijuana outlets as we are considering opening more up here in Colorado. But as he had mentioned, they have reduced thousands of marijuana outlets down to just simply hundreds. And the reason for that is for the extraordinary amount of nuisance, public nuisance problems that they have associated with those marijuana outlets as, as well as crime. He also discussed problems with dispensaries in California and Colorado, indoor, outdoor grows that are associated with those dispensaries, increasing influence on our youth and crime associated with it. The California Police Chiefs Association has done a study relating to problems surrounding medical marijuana and primarily dispensaries. And what they have seen is that just an explosion in crime associated with those dispensaries. Crimes like murder, attempted murder, aggravated robbery, robbery, burglary and, and theft, not to mention other controlled substances. Those are crimes that we see here in Colorado and in Jefferson County. In fact, just last week in Gilpin County, a dispensary had been burglarized. So it's for those reasons that we have seen just an absolute explosion in crime associated with these dispensaries and it's important to, to analyze this. These are crimes where there were none before. By adding dispensaries, you're adding a magnet of crime that could include very, very violent crime. Thank you.
Mayor, members of Wheat Ridge City Council, my name is Scott Storey. I'm your District Attorney, District Attorney in the First Judicial District, Jefferson and Gilpin Counties. Oh, S-T-O-R-E-Y. The, I echo Deputy District Attorney Matt Durkin's sentiments, so I won't go back over that. I'm going to urge you not to even think of enacting an ordinance. I think other municipalities around here will do that. I think you jeopardize Wheat Ridge becoming a kind of a funnel for these dispensaries. But one of the concerns might be the legal ramifications and you might have questions about that. Let me address that. Let me, first of all, I'll tell you about the genesis of the, the Colorado District Attorney's Council and the Attorney General's push to the legislature to, number one, outlaw marijuana dispensaries. And number two, if you don't do that, then let's put it on the ballot because this is not what the people voted for. The people voted for a caretaker model of medical marijuana, not a dispensary model. And so let's let the people weigh in on that. Obviously, we weren't successful and that's why we're here today. But our position is that dispensaries and grows are not permitted under the constitutional amendment, Amendment Number 20. And it's based upon the following. I'll just go ahead and read this, a position paper that we put out. Amendment 20 was passed by Colorado voters in 2000. Amendment 20 expressly provides for a system based on caregivers and patients having authority to possess two ounces of marijuana and six plants. The amendment uses the term patients 87 times, the term primary caregiver 22 times, and the term physician, physician 28 times. It never refers to either marijuana dispensaries or grows. Also, the amendment states primary caregiver is a person, a person, not a dispensary, and that the patient and his primary, and his or her primary caregiver were collectively in possession of a ounce of marijuana only as permitted by this section. That's a quote out of the amendment. Furthermore, Amendment 20 expressly states, quote, "No person, including a patient or a primary caregiver, shall be entitled to the protection of this section for his or her acquisition, possession, possession, or dispensing for any use other than the medical use." Obviously, the state constitution is the controlling law. The legislature can enact enabling statutes as long as they are not in conflict with the constitution. Quote, only legis, this is out of a case, "Only legislation which will further the purpose of such provisions or facilitate their operation is permitted," end of quote. And that's Common Cause versus Anderson, 495 Pacific Second at 221. Quote, "When construing a constitutional amendment, courts must ascertain and give effect to the intent of the electorate adopting the amendment. When the language of an amendment is clear and unambiguous, the amendment must be enforced as written," end of quote. Community Health Network versus the General Assembly, 166 Pacific Third at 283. And I think this is significant when I'm about to tell you, because there's a blue book that goes out and talks about the analysis of a constitutional amendment for and against. Well, in the 2000 election blue book entry for Amendment 20, the entry for Amendment 20 discusses only the caregiver-patient model and states that distribution of marijuana is still illegal if the amendment passes. And frankly, a dispensary model is a per se, de facto, distribution of marijuana. In 2001, when the legislature passed the enabling statute for Amendment 20, it expressly stated that, quote, "Section 14 of Article 18 of the State Constitution sets," and this is highlighted, "sets forth the lawful limits," I'm going to repeat that, "sets forth the lawful limits of the medical use of marijuana." In addition of dispensary, the addition of dispensaries and grows does not fall within, quote, "lawful limits," end of quote, of Amendment 20. Therefore, we believe that by passing this, what is it, 1280, House Bill 1280, they went beyond what Amendment 20 said and therefore it's illegal. It's in violation of the constitutional amendment. The bottom line here is that the legislature could legalize marijuana. They can do that. They just cannot expand upon or limit Amendment 20 and that's what they've done. So I think the legal analysis is pretty sound. The Attorney General also weighed in on that and so I don't think, certainly there's always legal challenges one way or the other, but I don't think, I'm pretty confident that the legal challenge would not hold muster. And frankly, California's been through this because California, of course, we seem to follow what California does and California had the caretaker model, then went to the dispensary model and then curtailed and had opt-out positions. Cities that opted out were challenged and, and they prevailed that challenge. So, look, the bottom line here and, you know, I care about Wheat Ridge, I care about Jefferson County, I care about Colorado. And the bottom line here is that I don't think we want to be the marijuana capital of the United States, which we certainly will become with this, with the addition of dispensaries. I understand the intent of the original Amendment 20. It was a righteous intent, but to expand this, either opt out of this thing and don't buy the headaches that you're going to be buying and don't buy the unintended cost that you're going to be buying, which will overshadow any revenue that you would take, or put it to a vote of the people and let the people weigh in on it. And I would, would remind you finally that in 2006, it was on the ballot statewide legalization of marijuana and it was resoundly defeated. So that's just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for item number five? Move on to council discussion, any discussion on the moratorium? That's what we're actually discussing tonight is a moratorium on any more dispensaries? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2010 on Second Reading and that it will take effect upon adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Demott voting no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Amendments are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed on first reading. Item six is Council Bill 12-2010. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 12-2010, An Ordinance Approving the Annexation of Two Remnant Parcels of Right-Away Located in the East Half of Section 16, Township Three South, Range 69, West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, Case Number ANX1002, City of Wheat Ridge. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number I move to approve Council Bill Number 12, 2010, Anordinance Approving an Annexation to the City of Wheatridge on First Reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for May, August, or Monday, excuse me, August 9, 2010 at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and that it takes, that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Berry voting no.
I pressed the wrong button through my computer screen. I apologize, but...
Do you want to re-vote?
Yeah, let me clear your votes.
I'll put down the screen next time.
Motion carries seven to one, uh, seven to zero.
Councilmember J voted no. Item seven is Council Bill 13-2010. Councilmember Reinhardt?
I'd like to introduce Council Bill 13, 2010, Anordinance Concerning Administrative Enforcement and Making Conforming Amendments to Article 5 of Chapter 2 of the Wheatridge Code, Code of Laws. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill 13-2010, Anordinance Concerning the Administrative Enforcement and Making Conforming Amendments to Article 5 of Chapter 2 of the City of Wheatridge Code of Laws on First Reading. Order it published for public hearing set for Monday, July 26, 2010 at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that it take place, that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item eight is Resolution 33-2010. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 33-2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $30,000 to the Wheatridge Business District for the purpose of funding the revitalization incentive grant program issue. At the June 21, 2010, City Council Study Session, John Marriott, Chairman of the Wheatridge Business District, requested additional funding from the city in the amount of $100,000. Council consensus was to approve an additional contribution in the amount of $30,000 to support the Wheatridge Business District revitalization incentive grant program. Is a motion in order?
A motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 33-2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $30,000 to fund Wheatridge Business District revitalization incentive grant program.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a couple of seconds, I believe, with Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item nine is Resolution 34-2010. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Resolution 34, 20-10, amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of supplemental budget appropriation and approving the award of RFP 10-22 for employee compensation structure analysis to Waters Consulting Group, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $24,500. An employee compensation analysis project was initiated by city council during the April 2010 strategic planning retreat. The scope is defined city council committee, consisting of myself, councilors Sang and Berry, set forth the following scope. A review and evaluate the structure and compensation levels of the executive management team and provide analysis and recommendation on those levels and structures. Review and evaluate staffing letters in the administrative services department and the administrative assistants to the mayor and to the city and council provide analysis in response to whether or not the department is appropriately staffed for the size of the organization. Review and evaluate Wheatridge's current process for competing its annual salary and market survey, and recommend potential changes to the process based on public sector, based on public sector best practices. This project's been identified as a priority by city council. In short of reading the entire write-up, what I'd like to add is that in the climate where we are in, where there's been, the entire city government needs to be under, under review as to its efficiency in light of the financial crisis. I think it's money well spent to invest in, in determining what the facts are as to our staffing levels and our payment levels, as opposed to relying on anecdote and hearsay as we've worked in the past. So I think this is money well spent, and if we make good determinations based on the information we receive, we may, we should find opportunities to run the most efficient city government we can. Is a motion...
A motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 34, 2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplementary budget appropriation and approving the award of RFP 10-22, employee compensation structure analysis to Waters Consulting Group, in an amount not to exceed $24,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Berry. Discussion, Councilmember Sang?
I am a part of the three that had the presentation by Walters, and I was very impressed with, with their analysis of what they would be doing. I, I'm reluctant to support this because of exactly what Councilreinhardt said about the climate in the city as far as our budget is concerned, and just wondering if, if it really is good use of taxpayers' money to, at this time, to do this with, with spending the $25,000. It would just really be a lot simpler for me to support this if we could have it done in-house. And I know that's a lot to ask, but, you know, you're having, the amount of money that we're spending for people to travel back and forth from Dallas to Denver and accommodations while they're here, I, I just feel that's a little excessive.
Any other comments? Ms. Berry?
Go ahead, Mike. You were first. Go ahead.
Okay. I won't support this at all. I think it's an obscene amount of money to study, to study, to study how we study salaries and particular things like that. You look, I think there, what is it, 22 people, that's $1,000 a person, to study why and how they make what they make. I think we can do it in-house better, and, and we make the decisions on the budget. We make the decisions, well, not necessarily personnel. Well, I guess it would come down to that, personnel, if we had to make a cut or suggest a cut to the city manager in particular personnel areas. But if I was going to spend $24,000 on something, it would, certainly wouldn't be for that, and it would probably go to the business district where it would really do some good. So I absolutely won't support this. I think it would be the worst $24,500 we ever spent in the city.
Ms. Berry?
Mr. Goff, what's our, our total payroll in the, in the city budget?
Our total budget's about $33 million, and it's about 70% of that, so...
So 70% of $33 million is payroll. So if we can find even a little efficiency, even a 1%, this is not, this isn't just looking at one department or 22 people, it's looking at the way we compensate employees, whether we should do pay for performance, or should we, should we keep our current step system? So it goes beyond just looking at the management analysis, so, as well as just, and it goes beyond just looking at what other folks are paying. It's how we are going to pay our employees. Just even a half percent savings in switching from either a step to a pay for performance would save us far an exceed of $24,000. So I think this is, is money well spent. In addition, by doing it in-house, what you would be doing is asking the management team to evaluate their own efficiency. I think that's a little hard to do. I think an independent evaluation is warranted.
Mr. Goff, would you clarify that, please? Because I think there's the impression that this is strictly an administrative review of salaries at the administrative level only. Could you clarify for council?
Clarify what the, the scope of the study is?
There's two different comments being made here. Some think it's just for administrative salaries, and some have mentioned that for the entire city. So could you clarify for that?
Sure. The scope, the scope of the proposed study is threefold. One is to look at the executive management team and the structure of that team and basically staffing levels of the executive management team. The second is to look at the administrative services department, look at the staffing levels of that department. And then the third is to look at, provide analysis of how the city conducts its analysis for this market adjustments it does on an annual basis to determine if they're using best practices.
Okay. Mr. Demott, then I'll get Ms. Sang back.
I, I also feel that $24,500 is a lot of money, when we've had, you know, a few consultants in here in the last, just since I've been here in seven months. I, I would, I would support having our new city manager, Mr. Goff, who I, I trust. I also would like to hear his, his opinion on whether it's high or low. And I don't think, really what we're doing is micromanaging all these departments, having someone come in from out of state. I'd like to hear what our administrative service director and our new city manager has to say, whether it be, you know, whether we interpret that in their favor or not. I'd like to hear. I trust that they would be honest and, and bring forward, so I don't, I won't support spending $24,000 on another consultant.
Ms. Langworthy?
I, I guess I have a question, because having attended the same strategic study session, or strategic, strategic planning retreat, during that, several of you that are saying, no, you don't want to spend the money, are the ones that insisted we do this. Many of us were, were, I, I guess it came to, that you guys were saying that you didn't want to have it done internally, because you weren't sure that an unbiased opinion would come of it. So a city council committee is formed, which is fine, because you have three people of various opinions, and you guys, you three met and came up with a decision, and now that this is being brought forward, you don't want to support the funding of it, and now you want it internally. I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying that you specifically, I'm saying that some of the people that are saying no, at that planning session, were ones that said they didn't believe that the, the city manager and the executive management were able to do an unbiased evaluation. So I'm supporting this, because if this is what came through from the strategic planning retreat, and, and I was told during that, that people wouldn't support it, wouldn't support it internally, because they really felt like it wouldn't be an unbiased thing, now we're having an unbiased opinion about it, and I would like to see what comes from it. Not that I didn't agree with it in the first place, but now that it's moved forward, let's move forward the way it was brought up in that planning session, which is to have an outside party do this.
Ms. Sang, did you want to respond?
No, I don't want to respond. I just want, I was just going to say that I, I have given a lot of thought, and I will be supporting this tonight, because primarily, I feel that, that since we have a brand-new city manager, that it would probably be the best thing for him to have, and not expect him with all he's got to do, to do this at the, at, at the city manager's level and in-house. So I, I don't like the fact that, that we're spending this amount of money. I would have liked to have seen us to be able to have maybe someone closer to our area instead of getting them from out of state. We only, we only, we only got one person to give us their presentation, so I, I feel it's a little excessive. I think we could have done better by getting someone that was closer to do the traveling and not come from Texas. But I, I think that Patrick needs this, and, so I will be supporting it.
Ms. Berry?
I, I want to read something from the scope of services that's in everybody's packet. Based on industry practices and the work being done as described within this RFP, should Wheatridge modify and/or change its pay approach? For example, a step system versus pay for performance or a hybrid of both. It's even on the title of the resolution. So it is more than just looking at 22 employees. It's very clear in there. Other communities have looked at how their pay structure is, how their pay structure, how they can change their pay structure to look at, again, pay for performance, where you get, where you get, you give incentives to people to perform at high levels, and you can also save money. And again, this is $24,000, but if we find, we can find some efficiency in that system, we're talking about far more money than $24,000. The reason why we did this particular firm is there are other cities in the state near us, Westminster, who are using this firm. It allowed us to go, to piggyback onto their RFPs, so we weren't using staff time and going through a full process. They're already, are traveling to Colorado to work with other cities, and the travel costs are not extensive, they're being shared. I think that this is something that council asked for in the study session, gave direction to staff, staff spent a lot of time on. We had a committee of various folks going through this. This is something that we should do, that we gave direction for council, for staff to do. And if we're going to do this, and if, if we're going to back at the last minute in the future, we shouldn't waste staff time.
Number one, I wasn't at the strategic planning session, so I can pretty much say what I want and how I feel, and I think this is disgusting. I think that the HR department, the administrative services, the city manager, the city attorney, for that matter, whoever, could pick up the phone and call each city, find out what they're doing, could send an email for free to find out how they're doing. And not only that, I think we've come to, to a particular point now, where all we do is compare each other with other cities. And I think that's kind of stupid, because now we need to start comparing ourselves with the private sector. And we better concern ourselves with the private sector and make sure there's fair and equitable salaries between the city and the private sector. And I can guarantee you, government life has far exceeded the private sector in wages or whatever. So I think, in all honesty, I tell you, I'm embarrassed. I think this is the worst $24,500 this city has ever spent.
Anybody else have any comments before we vote? Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that not everybody... I'm sorry, I hit, hit my button. Yeah, granted, not everybody was involved in the original decision to move forward with this, and maybe if I hadn't been involved in that process, I'd find it offensive as well. But I suggest there are other things in the budget that I would find more so offensive. That being said, the facts may have changed a little of the situation. I suggest we poll the council.
Poll the council on the main motion?
Motion carries five to two with councilmembers Stites and Demott voting no.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for tonight. Move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick announcement. I would like to congratulate the Wheatridge Police Department and Wheatridge Police Chief. Yeah. The Wheatridge Police Department was honored to receive the Pioneer Policing Award for its development of the Hold Up Robbery Prevention Program at the 2010 Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police Annual Conference. The program is an innovative approach to education in the area of business robbery prevention. At the same convention, our very own Wheatridge Police Chief, Dan Brennan, was sworn in as the newly elected president of this organization. So congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Sang?
Dean Goke was up tonight speaking at a public comment, and when he asked people to call him if they wanted to... to call him if they wanted to sign the petition, he didn't give out his phone number. So, he asked if I would do that. And his phone number is 303-877-2315. That's 303-877-2315.
Thank you. Councilmember Berry?
Mr. Goff, staff went through significant cost-saving measures last year and you were able to save quite a bit from what our approved budget was. When Mr. Holzer came and talked about how we have not, you know, the city hasn't, city council hasn't been talking about budget reductions. I was pretty proud of what staff went through last year to do reductions in the budgets. And I'm wondering if you can outline some of those cost measures. I know it's right off the cuff, but...
Yeah, there's, I can probably tick through a few things that we've done. We were able to cut back two to two and a half million dollars, I believe, in the budget, which increased our fund balance by the same amount. Some of those areas of cuts included staff furloughs. We had six staff furloughs, two in 2009 and four in 2010. We suspended all employee merit step increases and then also the, we suspended the market adjustments for employee salary ranges in 2009. I believe we pretty much held back on any replacement of vehicles and just a lot of extra training and conference meeting expense was also cut. Trying to think what else was on that list. It's been a while now. We're already planning the 2011 budget. So, we froze also positions that were open. I think we had six across the city. And we had employees where work may have been a little slower in one department were transferred to another department to fill in for some other, for some other positions. Anything else you guys can remember? Those are kind of the bigger things. But, across the board, major cuts to keep the budget costs down.
Could you give me like a list of all that? I'd like to give that to Mr. Holzer and maybe we can get Mr. Holzer to put that in his ad magazine that he sells, or he sells ads in and then distributes to citizens. I'd like to get that to him. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple notes. Mike, I agree 24,000 on some kind of consulting is just really tough right now when we're in such dire straits. But, something that comes to mind on that particular issue is, we are a service organization and we'd like to run like a corporation, but we are a service organization. That is what we are to do. And if, in fact, in the future, we're going to direct staff to look at our administrative, our deputy manager and our manager to look at switching up some cuts and something that are going to affect our employees, which in fact is what our fiber is because we are a service organization, I think it's important that we give our administrator some direction and data that can be objective rather than subjective as to why we are doing a change in perhaps, if in fact, we do do a, do away with step increases and we decide to do with more performance. I think we're going towards that, but to simply do it arbitrarily by having a manager do that, I think we need a formula and we need to look at what has been successful. Hopefully, that's what this $24,000 will bring. So, hopefully, in the long run, it will be a savings to us and also be more respectful of the people whom in fact work for the citizens and work for the council as a service organization because they are valued, they do the hard work, they're the ones that are out there. So, and the ones that are in the office here day in and day out, getting the things together for us that we need to be able to make the decisions we need to make. So, I support it in that regard and I think in the long run, it's a wise choice. So, even though I choke on that dollar amount quite a bit, but I think it's the right thing to do. Secondly, in response to the citizens that came in that are petition carriers, I do want to make a little bit of a comment back and not to drag it out completely, but that memo that they referred to tonight was a memo that came from me. And I had all expectations that that memo would in fact be a public memo, that it was not a private memo, or I wouldn't have put it in print. I'm happy that I brought it forward for discussion. I want to thank Dick Matthews for pointing out that I had errors in my grammar. Perhaps I should have reread it. The good news is now there is more awareness and awareness is exactly what I want to happen with this potential change or this initiative that will come forward. At this point in time, awareness is critical to our citizens. The key here is understanding the change, understanding if there is going to be a change. So, when they go to, if in fact, and when our citizens go to the ballot, to the ballot box, they will have all the information in front of them. I refer to a couple different webpages that I had done some research on and a couple things that were stated in this memo that came tonight from Mr. Matthews in explanation. I think we have eight bosses, not nine. And also, it was stated that is a costless effect that will come forward from this initiative. We need to have that studied. I don't know that that's factual. So, hopefully, that kind of information will come forward from our CEC committee and we'll find out exactly what the cost saving is. But, to say that there will be a cost savings for a change of government, I don't have those facts. So, basically, if this is truly a citizens' initiative that is coming forward, I wonder myself why there was a group of union people coming to my door asking for signatures and also why the petition carriers are paid. We need a true grassroots citizen initiative to come forward and we need clear, concise, and I speak to myself when I say this, accurate information coming forward. That is my goal and I hope as a council, that's what will happen. Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Demott?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Langworthy?
Nothing, thank you.
Reinhardt?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. We've got some stuff here. With all the rain that we had, the hot weather, please check your weeds. There's weeds growing all over. To the businesses on 38th, 44th, check your weeds, check your parking lots. Let's make, put our best foot forward. Now would be an excellent time, and I'm starting to see some of that stuff. There's been some strange things going on on 38th with some of the buildings and I think they've been bought or sold or something. And there's some changes going on and that's great. But, now is a great time to either relocate your home or your business to Wheat Ridge. Along with weeds, try to do a positive thing. If your neighbors can't get out there, help them. You know, help people on your block. Help yourself for that matter. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to welcome Mr. Goff and Heather Geier. Congratulate them on their new leading the administrative team for the city of Wheat Ridge. And welcome. I have many great expectations of you and I think you've done a great job so far and I think you'll have excellent performance in the future. It's a fresh breath, it's a fresh breath there, breath of fresh air. Also, I wanted to mention that as discussed at the study session, Patrick Goff and I will be meeting with the county to discuss 44th and Wadsworth. And the concern I have is that that project, we don't know what's going to happen when we discuss this with the county. And obviously, we have to discuss some things in executive session because we can't go into executive session, which is fine. But, I think some comments were made at the study session that we need to be careful of. A lot of work has gone into this project with the staff, with Patrick Goff, who's the executive director of the Urban Renewal Authority. The Urban Renewal Authority itself has volunteers who worked two and a half years on this. And I spoke with the chairman a couple of times on this already. And also with the council is, we have to be careful what message we're sending as a community. This is a public-public-private partnership. And if it wasn't upside down financially, private sector would be doing this a long time ago. But, the fact of the matter is to make that property whole again and to make it work for the city of Wheat Ridge and bring consumers to the city of Wheat Ridge to be a destination to the city, it may not generate revenue by itself, especially this first phase because it's a county organization. But, the consumers it brings, whether they're in motor vehicle or the library and/or the Health and Human Services as consumers. And what the city needs is consumers. The businesses need consumers. People complain about the businesses on 38th not, the fronts being empty. Well, the problem is you don't have consumers. We don't have the demographics. And the NRS was clear about that, that you needed consumers and residents in the area to frequent these businesses. So, we'll be meeting with the county. It's going to be tough to make all the numbers work, but this council is going to have to basically take the bull by the horns and help invest into this location. The city councils of the past and the mayors have had a very good reputation of snatching defeat out of the jaws of victory. So, what I'm asking you to do is that when we come back with some recommendations, that you honestly look at the big picture and not just the revenue generation of that one building or what's going to happen in that site, but the entire chain of events that will happen once that development starts all along Wadsworth down to 38th Avenue. The chairman of the Urban Renewal Authority is very excited about the project. He has some concerns about the issues of the financing and the funding that has to be worked out between the Urban Renewal Authority, the city of Wheat Ridge, and Jefferson County. And that's where it's going to have to start and we'll be meeting them with this week. Also, I wanted to just briefly talk about a few things. This is just more parliamentary procedure and FYI for the new council members. If we're having a meeting and there's a comment that's made, generally speaking, and you disagree with it or it's derogatory and impugning motives, a council member would call for a point of order. That's the standard point of order. They're impugning motives, it's not germane to the subject, and then I have to rule on that point of order as chair. What happened tonight with the sound, really, if you have an issue with sound or the environment, you would do a call to a rise of an order of privilege. And then we would stop the meeting and then the problem would be addressed, whether it's sound, heat, you know, vision or whatever the problem is, more of a logistical problem. So, that's a call to a rise of an order of privilege. We have also a point of order, which if you want to call somebody on a comment they made. And then the last one is, if you call for the question, that's fine, but normally the call for the question takes six votes of council, in this case, six votes of council to stop debate. Then you have to vote to call for the question. That takes six votes to pass. But, there's no debate on call for the questions. Those are just some housekeeping issues that I wanted to bring up for the future. And I guess I wanted to quote Mark Twain on some things I've heard tonight from the public and also from the dais. And this is a pretty good quote because it really reflects what's going on with some of the things I've been hearing in the community and reading. "It ain't what you don't know that is a problem, it's what you think is true and is not." So, that's what Mark Twain has to say about a lot of different things. The last thing I want to read is a memo about fireworks for the Fourth of July for this year. "The Fourth of July is a time of celebration, family picnics, and enjoying the outdoors. Unfortunately, these celebrations can be ruined when property is destroyed or injuries occur as a result of illegal use of fireworks. The police department experiences a significant increase in calls for service this time of the year related to the use of illegal fireworks. These calls take away from our time to work on more serious police-related calls for service. All calls related to fireworks received by the Wheat Ridge Police Department will be prioritized and the first available officer will be dispatched using the following standards. Firework calls involving injury or property damage will be first. Firework complaints of an emergent nature, i.e. children present, hazardous areas, fireworks in the greenbelt, etc. Firework complaints where the name of the person illegally using the fireworks is known or can be identified, and frequency of calls to a specific location involving the same persons. In a community effort to minimize the risk of property damage and personal injury caused by fireworks, I would ask that citizens refrain from the use of illegal fireworks. The police department is taking a strong enforcement stance regarding the illegal use of fireworks." Easy for me to say. "Summoners shall be issued when appropriate for violations of the fireworks ordinance to include the possession, use, storage, and sale of fireworks. I would encourage everyone to have fun on this Fourth of July holiday by enjoying one of the many planned Fourth of July celebrations held throughout the Denver metro area. So, please be safe and respect your neighbors, peace and quiet." Any other questions?
I'd just like to make an additional comment. I think just one bit of information on the development at 44th and Wadsworth, property that the citizens might be interested in is mostly that would be a county facility. It would be a county facility for health department clinics, for a new library or a stout library, we're not really sure, as well as for motor vehicle. As taxpayers, we pay the county already for those services in order to get that built and constructed. Right now, the county would be asking us to subsidize the cost of the land as well as to build improvements for them to the tune of about $3.2 million. I think my questions there at this point is, is that a wise use of $3.2 million? I look forward to additional discussions about that, but I don't think very lightly about spending $3.2 million for bringing those services to Wheat Ridge in some sense which we already pay for. I would love to see something there and be developed. I think that would be a great use. My biggest problem with it is the cost of that to the taxpayers of Wheat Ridge.
Well, see, with all due respect, Ms. Berry, that's what we need to be careful of because throwing out a number like that in this phase of the project is irresponsible because we don't know exactly what the cost will be and the cost of the city, whether we're guaranteeing funds or not necessarily spending money but guaranteeing other funds or guaranteeing the project or increasing our contribution back to Urban Renewal Authority, are different options that we need to look at. So, to throw out a $3.2 number now is premature. It was a discussion about all the different possibilities. And that's what I'm concerned about is that we're going to scare off a developer or scare off the county or somebody because this is being hashed out in public with information that may not necessarily be accurate or current at the time of the discussion. So, we'll meet with the county on this week and we'll come back to council. Patrick and I will come back with some information. And I'm hoping that council, like I said, quit snatching defeat out of the jaws of victory and make something happen in the city because no one's banging the door to get inside the city right now. And we know that. On 38th, 44th, Wadsworth, Hippeling, nobody is banging on the door to get into the city for a very lot of reasons. One is the economic climate. That's why we need a public-public-private partnership at this location for the future.
Those, the figures that I said were ones were passed out at a public meeting at a study session. So, this is like no secret.
That's correct. They are not a secret, but they're not final. And to scare taxpayers into saying $3.2 million is what we're going to spend is premature at this time. We can't talk about a lot of this stuff in executive session. So, we must be careful about what we talk about until we have the final number so everybody has a win-win situation, the county taxpayers, the Wheat Ridge taxpayers, and the developer of that site. Any other comments or questions? Renowned.